All right, everybody. Thanks for coming tonight. We're going to have a special assessment hearing for Rushmore Boulevard. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Reese, the engineer, and then we're going to have a little council discussion, and then we're going to open it up to audience. So, go ahead, Dave.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's meeting is for the preliminary improvement hearing of Rushmore Boulevard and Rushmore Trail improvements. I'm Dave Reese with Woodseth. We are the engineering firm that prepared the feasibility study, and assisted staff was sending out the notices for the project. I'm going to go through the highlights of the feasibility study, and then we'll handle council questions. Then we'll handle questions or comments that may be received by folks that are here in attendance tonight. And then anyone on Zoom will address your questions after that. So, without any further ado, we'll go through the project Okay. Rushmore Boulevard and Rushmore Trail is project area number two out of five project areas slated for the 2021 street improvement projects. This set of projects was delivered to the city council through the capital improvement planning and the Public Works Commission for the, for 2021. Rushmore Boulevard being located in this location here. You also see that we have Harbor Lane nearby, and the other roads are highlighted in pink. The project area that's proposed to be improved for this particular project area includes all of Rushmore Boulevard and Rushmore Trail that has been maintained by the city. And that includes the segment beginning at County State Aid Highway 16, proceeds up to the intersection where there's the grass island in the middle. Rushmore Boulevard proceeds westerly to the point that we show. It's been maintained. And then easterly down to the end of the point, as we've shown on this drawing. There's some comments that we've received by phone and email on this project so far. They include whether or not we can do something about their approach to Highway 16 during the design phase with maybe lessening the steepness of the approach for vehicles that are trying to get off of Rushmore Boulevard and onto Cassas 16. So, that's, that's like one comment that we've received. Also, there's a few areas of drainage concern, erosion in the low areas that we've received comments on. Down to the easterly leg of Rushmore Boulevard, there are two storm inlets that were installed several years ago. I happen to recall those, that situation several decades ago, and when they were installed. And there's an outlet pipe that lets that area of drainage go out toward the lake. So, in that area will, those will remain intact as part of the proposed improvements. Okay? At this point, I do have two written statements that the city clerk has provided me with that were received. One yesterday, February 1st, from Gary Swoverland. And I think I'll, I'll just read that into the record here while I am at this point, if that's okay. So, "To whom it may concern, we are writing to express our concerns and objections to the above-proposed special assessment against the two parcels of land we own, which abut Rushmore Boulevard. Our first concern is that Rushmore Boulevard and Trail does not seem to be in such disrepair that it needs to be replaced and cannot be repaired. This is only a street designed to provide access to primary or seasonal residences, and vehicles should be traveling at a slow rate of speed. Also, there is a component to the project, mailbox posts, which would not seem to have an impact on the condition of the road, and we question why they are included in the project. Our second concern is that the amount of the proposed special assessment, $4,000 per parcel, $8,000 in our case, greatly exceeds any special benefit increase in market value our two parcels would receive from a new road. While the majority of the properties along this road are located on Rush Lake and have relatively high property values, our property is not located on Rush Lake. Property ID 14170556 has an assessed 2021 market value of $13,700. It is located on the corner of County Road 16 and Rushmore Boulevard and is accessible from County Road 16. The portion which abuts Rushmore Boulevard has an easement running through it to give to crowing power access to run their power line. That makes this portion of the lot basically unusable. Property ID 14170555 is a two-bedroom seasonal cabin with detached garage and has a 2021 assessed market value of $185,700. We would appreciate your review and consideration of our concerns and objections. Please acknowledge receipt of our comments." The second one is from Mr. Hank Nutzman of 36484 Rushmore Boulevard. Called City Hall today, February 2nd, 2021 at 10:45 a.m., stated he wants to be on record that he is not in favor of the reconstruction of Rushmore Boulevard. Okay? I just wanted to make sure I got those into the record.
Yeah, good.
All right. Proceeding onward, the roadway itself and the need for the improvements. The road itself has quite a bit of pavement distress. The road surface is oxidized, which means it's starting to become porous, and the water that seeps into the pavement section itself will continually break it up. Some of these cracks are becoming so wide that it is really a waste of money to continue to try to crack seal them. Patching efforts are not holding up for any great length of time. And the road age itself has really lived through its life cycle. And our recommendation, along with other consultants and the Public Works Commission, has been to reconstruct this road through a full-depth reclamation, which means grinding up the pavement that's there, blending it with the base that's there, and basically building a new platform to build a new paved road section on. And also try to elevate the road a little bit to help with the drainage and getting it off to the sides of the pavement so the water isn't standing on the pavement, so it'll last longer. This is a slide that shows the proposed road section. I'll try to zoom in on that a little closer, so that folks can see that. Basically, we're not proposing to increase the width of the road or the alignment horizontally of the road. A little bit of vertical change in the road, possibly to smooth out or ease the transition up onto 16. But otherwise, the road itself will be about the same width. We're looking on average about 22 feet of paving width with a shoulder. The reclaimed section adding on top of that about three inches of Class 5 aggregate base course, and then a two-and-a-half inch thick wearing course. In general, this has been done many, many times in the city of Cross Lake, and these roads have withstood the traffic and loadings that, that we've placed on them, and it's been a good design section. We've estimated the cost of these improvements based on typical elements of construction for a full-depth reclamation, and it includes some spot repair and subgrade correction. It includes all of the full-depth reclamation, the new pavement, paving itself. It also includes replacement of mailbox supports, which is consistent with the city's standards. The existing mailboxes will be relocated to the new supports as part of the project. And then restoration along the shoulders with topsoil and seating. So, the total estimated construction cost with a 10% contingency at this feasibility study stage is about $179,000. And the typical soft costs include engineering, admin, and legal costs for an assessment project would be about just under $36,000. And so, our total estimated project cost for this project at this time, and based on this scope of work, is about $215,000. Okay. We've gone through the scope. We've gone through the cost estimate, now the assessments, and how that would be handled. The policy of the city is to look at the, assessing these improvements based on the benefits, the benefit received by the improvements. So, the city commissioned, licensed appraiser to give a benefit opinion for the different types of properties located along this project area. We have both on-lake and off-lake properties. Some are built with structures on them. Some are vacant. In all cases, we're looking at ranges of benefit. It may vary a little bit, but it gives the city council a basis on which to form the assessment value. So, for instance, the single-family residential home on, on Lake would benefit in terms of $5,000 to $10,000 per lot, by the appraiser's opinion. If it were a non-Lake residence, $4,000 to $8,000 per lot. And also vacant lots, lake lots, $4,000 to $8,000, and non-Lake lots, $2,000 to $6,000. The city council has taken this into consideration in looking at what the assessment methodology would be. And for the 39 assessable parcels along the project area, we are looking at assessing $4,000 per lot. And that's at the bottom of the range for some of the classes of property that have buildings or are lake lots. And it's about right at the range or the middle of the range for off-lake and unbuilt property. So, the total project cost estimate is $215,000. This particular project area would generate roughly $156,000 in assessments, and the remainder of the cost would be the city's cost. This is one of the five project areas where we're looking at probably more revenue generated by assessment than the other project areas. When we look at all five project areas together, the total assessed amount for this year's project is about 41%. The steps that we need to look at for the assessment project, maybe I need to blow that up a little bit. We've gone through the feasibility report preparation. We're holding our hearings here tonight on February 2nd. The resolution ordering improvement preparation and plans would be the next step after we hold the hearings, take public input. I have that as February 4th. It will likely be Monday, February 8th, where the resolution will be heard by the city council. And then we go on with the rest of the project, assuming that the city council would advance the project to bidding. We'd take bids and march construction. If a contract's awarded, would likely begin after load limits are off. Most of the time that happens after Labor or Memorial Weekend, and the construction usually takes about four to six weeks. We expect we'd be done by August sometime, and then we would hold a final assessment hearing, a second hearing, where everyone would receive notice again of that hearing and be able to speak on the assessments themselves. After that, adoption of the assessment roll, and then certification to the county auditor for placement on the tax rolls. And you would see those on your 2022 tax rolls. Also, I'd like to mention that the state statute allows people that, the right to pay their assessment in full without incurring any interest, if done within 30 days after adoption of the assessment roll. And that will likely take place in the fall. Okay? So, that would conclude this presentation. Does the council have any questions?
Dave, on your second assessment hearing, why is that necessary? Could the assessments go up or down depending on the cost?
Sometimes they do if we weren't following this particular methodology, which is based on the appraiser's opinion or benefit. We're basically setting the $4,000 value for assessments.
It's set. I can't go up or down.
Right.
So, is there a need to have that assessment hearing, the second one?
It's required by statute, yes. Any other questions from the city council? All right. Then we'll open it up to the folks that are present here tonight that would like to speak. And if you would please come to the podium, state your name and address, and then we'll try to answer your questions. Thank you.
And please don't be bashful. Now is your time.
I'm not bashful, Dave.
Good. Get up here. Bring it on, buddy.
Okay. I, I live on Rushmore Boulevard, Jim.
What's your last name?
McClellan, 12780 Rushmore. You know, I, I think a lot of the things you talked about were, it needs a lot of work, but it doesn't need work for the whole road. So, is there a chance to get a modified version of this, where I got neighbors that have drainage problems? We got the issue down by the highway. I mean, I almost got creamed today trying to get around the corner because people come by the wharf. You know, if you don't get going, you know, that's... Anyway, most of the main road to where I live, by the T, where the grassy island is, is pretty good. I think a lot of that could be just overlaid. I don't think we need to do a full-blown dig it up and redo it, and then tie the whole thing up for like two months or a month and a half or whatever to do that. I think they could not do just, you know, kind of modify this thing. So, you know, and the other thing is you've got a lot of the people, some are here, some of them don't live here, some of them didn't come tonight. They're older people. They're on fixed incomes. That was the family cabin that was passed down. They've retired there. You know, we don't need to pay, you know, if we can get by a little cheaper, would be fine. You know, I know the road needs work. So, that's about what I got to say.
Okay. So, Jim, for this to get here, it's got to go through the Public Works Department. And, and they've gone through this a lot. There's five road projects that we're going to do this year.
Right.
I believe, Mr. Reese, am I right? Three of them are reconstruxes and two of them are overlays?
Four.
Four are reconstruxes and one overlay. So, there is, I mean, you can't overlay it, but the Public Works is moving it forward to the council that it should be a reconstruct. Now, I agree with you. I'm one that always wants to save money and make the most sense out of stuff. But the Public Works, you know, it's, the council is going to make the determination on this. So, there are quite a few of you here. You know, I'd be curious how many residents are on the road that are not south or someplace else that are available to come to this meeting tonight. There's, you know, a pretty good showing of people here. So, we'll see what everybody has to say.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's a few more that, well, we're, we're pretty well-attended for the ones that are year-round.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, I don't know. And some of them own multiple lots. So, I don't, so...
I appreciate your input.
Thanks, Dave.
My name is Charles Patezo. I currently am a full-time resident at 12896 Rushmore Boulevard.
Thank you.
I am particularly in favor of the full reconstruction of the surface of our road. I have with myself a copy of the appraisers, of what they have discussed of what is the benefits. And I only have two issues of, not two issues, two points that they talk about out of 16 of the benefits. And one, they talk about the drainage. And they said in the report that it was non-applicable. Well, the drainage is very important to me because I am the keeper of the drain hole that is there on Rushmore Boulevard. When the, in 1990, my father-in-law said to this committee that he was not in favor of it because of the drainage, because there was no sewer drainage at that time when it was first laid in. Subsequently, after the road got put in and assessed, and the first major rainfall came in, it flooded our property that I currently live in at that time back in 1990. Subsequently, now Dave already knows, that a drain was put in after that fact of the flooding. And so, since I have moved up here, I have been the keeper of removing the leaves, the snow, to keep that drain open. So, in this report, it does not talk about what is the benefit. It was non-applicable. The storm sewer, it says it's a surface sewer, but it needs to be repaired. The road surface in oxidation that has happened around that area, besides the driving, has worsened because of settling water. So, I am definitely in favor of this particular project.
So, Mr. Reese, have you addressed that or looked at it or talked to him about what's going on?
He talked to me. I'm his wife, Margaret.
Okay. Yes, we did. And is your repair or resolve included in the assessment to do?
Yes. The, the storm sewer system that exists will remain intact as part of the project. We're not removing any part of the, the storm sewer system. The, the road construction will include elevating the rims of those castings so that they're flush with the new elevation of the road surface, because it's going to come up a little bit with the new, with more material, additional aggregate base and black topping.
So, you'll raise the existing culprit up?
Yeah. We'll raise the castings.
Okay. But where it drains to, if I heard you correctly, where it drains to is also a problem?
Currently, on both sides of the road, it does puddle after the, subsequently, it does its job at first, and when the storms have finished and the suns come out, there is puddling before the, each side of the street where the drains are. And subsequently from that, I don't know whose responsibility it is, whether it's my responsibility or the city's responsibility of unplugging the hole that goes to the lake. And that is a question that needs maintenance.
So, there's a ditch or something that runs down, and it just daylight drains to it?
Goes directly to the lake, yes. But that's a different issue. But I'm trying to answer Mr. Herzog's question, that there is a drainage to the lake, and I have also been the keeper of that, trying to unplug that.
We appreciate you keeping an eye on that.
Yes.
Especially Public Works.
So, I'm not, what was, my father-in-law was a seasonal at that time for the number of years when it was put in in 1990. And then the drain came in in 1991, which Dave had seen, and...
So, you're in favor of the reconstruction, particularly to take care of your drainage problem?
In that particular area of the road on Rushmore Boulevard. I think it'll help tremendously. That's my comments for today. I thank you for hearing from us.
Thank you very much. Yep.
Hello, Mr. Fisher.
Good evening. Dave Fisher, 36412 Rushmore Boulevard. I am in support of this project. And I have one particular concern. I've talked to Dave about it, and Dave addressed it earlier. It's the approach to Highway 16. Not only do you have the sharp upward pitch of the road there that makes it very difficult to get out. In fact, if you want to come and experience it tomorrow would be an ideal time because there's lots of ice there. And do it during the daytime when you can't see the lights coming from, the traffic coming westbound past the wharf, because generally, most motorists, once they get by the wharf, it's time to get to Pequot Lakes as quick as you can. And so, so it's a dangerous intersection.
Is there a blind approach sign or anything on the highway there? Is there anything?
No. No, it's, the, the problem, Dave, is that, you know, you're, you're sitting, if, when you come up to the stop sign in order to see the traffic coming from the east...
But you're still on the radius of the turn, too, so the two of them.
Well, that, that's, yeah, the radius of the turn of 16. So, anyway, Dave assures me that that's going to be addressed. There's also a drainage problem there as, because when the road, when Rushmore Boulevard comes down, so hopefully we'll be, get that fixed at the same time. So, the elevation and drainage will be fixed. So, that's my only concern. Of course, I live on the beginning of the road as opposed to the end of the road. So, that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Thank you. My name is Roger Otterly. And we're at 12756 Rushmore Trail. I know the trail, there's basically, I think, four properties that use the trail, and...
So, Roger, excuse me, is that up to the T and to the left? Is that the trail?
The trail goes to the left.
Oh, correct.
And we're the property that if you continue going straight, you would run into our property. The $4,000 seems to be quite high. The reason I say that is we have eight properties. So, that would be a pretty big chunk, you know, of money.
How many of those properties are undeveloped?
I would say seven.
Okay. So, you got, so you got the seven lots on the...
Seven lots. You know, one is on the lake, though, so, you know, we're, we're paying, you know, quite a bit of property tax. So...
So, you were in support of the project?
Well, you know, I think the trail portion should be exempt. It gets very little usage. And... And...
It's still a city street, though. I mean, it's, yeah.
You know, we do use the boulevard, but my concern is that four thousand dollar per lot seems to be quite high. And if we look at the total number of residents or parcels, I think there is thirty-eight. Thirty-eight parcels?
Thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine. Okay.
Doesn't pay to own a lot of property sometimes, does it?
Pardon?
Doesn't pay to own a lot of property sometimes, does it?
Guess not, not at times like this. But that's my main concern.
Okay, well, we are, we are definitely aware of that. I, I don't know what adjustments can be made for that. A property's a property. If you start making exceptions all the way down the road, you're, you're gonna be in trouble, so. We will definitely consider it.
Okay.
See if there's anything to do. Anything else on the road? You good with everything else?
Uh, no, it's true. It's, you know, getting onto sixteen, it's many a times I've gone there and, you know, been stuck. You know, have to back up.
Yep.
You know, make a run-up, and they do, from the left, they come very quick.
Have there been many accidents there on the corner? You know, as you go pull it out or just close calls?
I, I'm not, I'm not sure on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thanks for coming up. Anybody else? Up here? Anybody on the screen? No? Okay, well, any comments from the board here? Is he trying to get on? Don, are you trying to get, you gotta unmute. You've gotta unmute your mic.
Okay, I did it.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I have a concern, uh, two concerns, actually. I just got this letter about four days ago. I'm not in the area right now. We're wintering in Florida for a couple of months, and it didn't give me much time to respond, but after hearing some of the comments, I, I too am pretty much in favor of the project. However, I have a little drainage problem in a corner there. I'm the first one on the right off of that. And I will agree with everybody that access to sixteen creates a hazard every time I go there. And not only is the angle steep coming up, but also there's also tree limbs hanging in the, in the, in, in the sight picture heading to the left or to the east. And also the speed coming around that corner. Like Dave said, once they get past the wharf, they put the hammer down and they come by me or come by that intersection going fifty, sixty miles an hour. And there's some people who just barely miss me and they think it's my fault because I'm too slow coming out when they're actually the ones going sixty miles an hour past there. Anyhow, that's another concern. My other concern is, is the, the drainage into my property. The crown of the road is gonna go to the, to the east, you might say, coming out of the exit to be to the left. And I have a drain, a slight drainage problem there now with the elevation between the ground and my basement floor. There's only about four, five, six inches difference. So far, it has not been a problem. I'm not, but I, but I don't want to create one with this new construction coming up. There's talk of elevating the, the crown of the road and making the crown so that water does not accumulate on the road, which is expected, but I don't want a whole lot of water coming into my area because of that and then creating problems with my foundation and, and my, my water drainage coming out of there. So that would be my only concern. Some of you from the engineering department, maybe look at that. I'd consider it sometimes to get in there with a backhoe or something and create a little, let's say, a ten-foot diameter and a five-foot deep drainage pond in there for me. You know, the drainage is real good once the water gets in there. It's all sand and it goes away quickly, but I don't want it to accumulate.
Let's hear what Mr. Reese...
And, and, you know, I guess...
Let's, should we hear what Mr. Reese's, what he's got to plan to, for their correction?
Sure.
Yeah. Dave, what you got there?
Sure. Well, we haven't designed the project yet, but we are aware of these concerns and, and typically what we'll do is where we have a driveway, that we have drainage going down the driveway, we'll try to configure the roadway so that the drainage is redirected or goes past the driveway. Sometimes we do that with a little bit of bituminous gutter is one method. Other ways, we can create a swale or get that drainage off before the driveway and do, just like you said, put in a small capture area or a small infiltration area for the runoff to seep, seep in.
What is your plan for the approach to sixteen? Are you gonna come back a hundred feet and elevate it and flatten it out?
Yeah, it would, it would have to, we'd have to look at the geometry of that, the centerline profile going up, matching with county highway, and we'd review that with county engineer as well, so that they're, they're aware of that interaction.
What does it take to get a blind approach or blind intersection or some kind of marking on the road? I mean...
Well, that would, you're, the motorists that you're targeting are the ones that are driving on Highway sixteen going westbound.
Right.
And so, that, that would be the county engineering department that we'd need to speak with.
With Rob Hall or something.
Yeah.
Ted, what do you got to say?
I've already requested that they look at adding a blind intersection there.
And when did you do that?
I did that this fall, and I have not heard back from them yet. I'll follow through with it.
Can you follow up on it? I mean, that seems like kind of a critical issue with this thing.
Yes, because it's been more, I've been more, made aware about that residence. It's more of a problem.
Yeah. Winter would be worse, yeah.
Can I speak there?
We, I've talked about that.
Did you hear that, Don?
We get all that gravel in our yard.
We're gonna fix all that.
Don, did you hear Dave's response?
You gotta unmute again. Okay, I get it.
Okay. But he didn't hear your response. So did you have a question on Mr. Reese's response there, or were you good with that?
No, I heard that part of it, yes. I heard that. But he mentioned a hundred feet back, you know, that goes beyond my driveway then.
I actually mentioned the hundred feet, whatever the significant amount is to, to, you know, I mentioned the hundred feet, Mr. Reese didn't. So whatever it takes to, so you can get up sitting relatively flat at the intersection, I would say.
Okay. I have just one more comment. I'd like to say hi to my neighbor, Dave.
All right. Good for you. All right.
Did you talk to him about all?
Okay. Whoever, Ron Nelson. That's, yeah. His wife keeps chirping in. Okay, well, those are all real valid points that we'll definitely take into consideration. The approach, I think, is number one, and there's a couple of water areas that should be pretty easily fixed. I believe this gentleman here would be willing to put a depression or something there, but, you know, to ensure that he doesn't get water in his house is very critical. And it sounds like you got two issues. You gotta elevate the road, you gotta keep the water from getting there, so. So, that, the other concern is the vacant lots, the percentage of, you know, I, we should have a conversation about that. I think through these assessments, the city is maybe trying to encourage you to sell the lots and build houses so we can increase our tax base or something. But I get it. I, I kind of like not having lots all built up, too, so I don't know how we can address that. So, any other comments on it? Yep, go ahead, Dave.
Um, I don't want to put Ted on the spot, but I was wondering if Ted could come to the podium and, and explain the stories that he's had trying to snowplow a lot of the streets that are in really poor condition and why he thinks it's best to get them in tip-top shape.
Well, this is one of the roads where, I don't know if everybody realizes it, there's not much blacktop left. We've gone through the wear course on top and we're down to the aggregate of the, the road. There isn't much there left. We have to be really careful and carry the plow when we plow that, this whole road that they're talking about Rushmore and Rushmore Trail. There's just not a lot left. We could actually dive the plow through and take out a good portion of the road if we're not really careful with it. So that's one of the things we always worry about. There's not a lot, a lot of room on this road to, on the end of it, back by that couple's property, to even get rid of the snow. We typically pick the plow up and, he's an excellent steward for the city. He's, usually he's got it blown off for me by the time I get there. And thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Come on up.
I blow off at least five lots of roadwork for snow removal. And when Ted comes by, he's got the biggest smile on his face. But it quickly changes to a frown because he's now gotta turn around and it's very difficult in that area because it's not very wide. And so, I appreciate Ted coming down when he does, but once he sees that I've done my work, he just high-tails it out of there. So Ted, I want to say thank you.
Yes. So, but I haven't heard Mr. Reese address, it's the same roadbed that's going back in. Is there gonna be any widening or any storage places, or are you gonna do anything for that?
There, there's no place to widen it, too. You have their home and their home and the road that's there. That's what we have. That's all we have. I turn around and I'm thankful the neighbors allow me to turn around in the driveway. It would be a long way for me to back those trucks out of there, but we have done it.
Yeah.
We typically, what we do is, is as I get to this area where he's talking about, he's got it blown off, I pick the plow up, I get turned around, and the snow that I've taken and accumulated, then I'm trying to kick it to the other side and get back out of there.
So are you going down there with the big plow or the little truck?
I've done both. We've had to do, but it depends on the amount of snow.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I'm real familiar with the road and it is, there's not a lot of room.
No.
But there is no, there's no room for accommodation to have any, you know, there's no, just no place to put it.
Not unless we buy up, buy up property and, and turn and make a turnaround, so, and I don't see that happening.
But there is no vacant property down there.
No.
Yeah.
You'd have to take a, you know, purchase a property from somebody, and I just don't see that happening, so.
I don't either. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Ted. All right, does anybody else have anything to say on the closing on this one? We do have plenty of time, if you want to keep going. Fifteen minutes. And I guess I, I'm just gonna throw this out because that's kind of who I am, but during the process working through the Public Works, I asked Public Works if we could get alternate pricing for an overlay and a reconstruct. It would be kind of, now, on this road, there's some areas that gotta be addressed and fixed, but, you know. I don't know how difficult that is to do, Dave. This project, really, the number in it isn't that much for the size of the road and what's going on there. But I think we were always working with thirty to forty percent on overlays as a cost kind of rough comparison.
I'd say that's a fair estimate in difference between overlays and in full-depth reclaim.
But we've got a couple of areas that need attention that's gonna add to that.
Right. This, this particular road, the pavement is, well, it was overlaid in nineteen ninety. So, our, the surface that we're looking at here, and it's not just the surface, like Ted said, it's been worn down through thirty years of plowing and water, water.
Breaking it down.
Continually breaking it down. And if you took a core of that section, you'd really get a good picture of just what that looks like. It, it really becomes more of a sponge. Whenever it rains, it, it takes that water in, then you get the freeze thaw. The pavement continually degrades. You start to lose the aggregates out of the top, and it, it just goes south from there. So, on this one especially, you know, reclaiming it and getting the benefit of salvaging that material rather than putting another coat on top, I think, is the right way to go.
Okay, does anybody else in the council have anything to say to it? No. Come on. Sure, come on. You gotta come up and say, tell who you are. Let the world know who you are.
My name is Mike Hagland. We're at 12838 Rushmore Boulevard. And one of my questions, why have they waited thirty years to redo this? Why hasn't this been maintained and kept up over time so it doesn't get to such a bad degree where the expense gets so high?
Well, I, my answer to that is that the city has continued its efforts every year since the roads were paved originally to develop a, a pavement plan of maintenance and continual upgrade. An upgrade to newer standards that fit the traffic of the time we're in. We've got a lot more traffic than there used to be thirty years ago, lots of different types of traffic, putting greater loads on the roads. A lot of the roads paved thirty years ago were just paved on topsoil. Someone took a grader, cleared the trees, cleared the topsoil, or maybe just scraped off the vegetation and paved it. And I'm really surprised that a lot of the streets in Cross Lake have lasted as long as they have. Thirty years is what we hope to get out of a really well-designed roadway with good subgrade that we know is there. So, I'd say this road has far exceeded how long it's been there. The city's done crack sealing every year, tried to do it on a rotating basis every three to four years. And, you know, now we've got a chip sealing program. The city hadn't done that before, so we've been applying that.
Is that gonna be the new normal, the chip sealing?
It's really a good idea to do it within a few years after the roads. Still, it's got its integrity from having the compaction of the initial paving, and it's good and tight, dense, the density is there to seal that top.
You did that on Manhattan Point, correct?
Yeah.
That was chip sealed. Chip sealed, is that the right term for it?
Yeah, seal coat, yeah.
And, and that will be done to this road, too, in a year or so?
Yeah.
But that's not part of this pricing?
No, it isn't.
What is the price of doing that in rough terms?
This past year in two thousand, it averaged about two dollars and ten cents a square yard.
Okay, and what do you got, a thousand yards here or six thousand yards here?
I haven't, I haven't developed a yardage. I could look that up if you'd like.
Kind of recall seeing that, because he had six hundred and fifty yards of class five and six thousand yards of reclaiming. It was about ten percent.
Square yards. Six thousand, five eighty.
Okay, so sixty-five hundred at two bucks is thirteen thousand bucks. It's gonna cost us seal coat it next year? Okay.
That's on the county's, county-wide contract, so you're getting a pretty good price that way.
Yeah, the county doesn't do it, but we're taking advantage of their contracts.
It's their contract, yeah.
And that sixteen thousand is not levied on them?
No.
No, that's just a city, we just do that. There's no charge for that.
It's considered maintenance. So, going back to the point of answering the gentleman's question, we just simply didn't have those programs in place twenty, thirty years ago, and now we do, and we're trying to get another thirty years out of this effort.
Okay, we got ten minutes left here. I'm gonna pick your brain. Stay up there for a second. Some of that crack sealing they do is like putting a roll of Play-Doh down and they put it down and they drive out and put toilet paper over the top, but you hear a lot of criticism about that because a week or so later, it's coming up like rope and it's laying all over the road. So is that a practice that we're gonna quit doing? I mean, it doesn't seem to work very well. It seems to be a, a waste of time and money.
When a crack gets usually wider than three-quarters of an inch or so, that's about the maximum width that you would crack seal. To have a reasonable expectation that the rubberized crack sealer is going to stay in place, they overband that after that filler's in, and you try to get another two, three years out of, out of that seal effort.
But it does seem to be a Band-Aid, a half-inch, quarter-inch crack, and they'll put that two-inch wide strip on there, and then it just peels up, it doesn't adhere very well.
Yeah.
Because crack sealing, you know, seems to work well, we'll see as the years go high how well it works, but...
Yeah.
Seems to hold up well.
Cracks that are wider than that take a different type of material and sometimes patch material beyond...
Do you think that's what happened on Wildwood Ranch, is it had those cracks across the road? Does water get in there and wash it out, and then it creates a void and it pounds down, and that's where that...
Yeah, the, the water will make its way into those cracks and freeze and thaw, and it'll gradually...
Wildwood Ranch is a depression though, it's an inverted speed bump, you know, they're down, so it, it almost appears like it's washing.
And what I've seen, the cause of that to be in the past, not always, but is because of a utility trench that was knifed across the road with a bullet head plow, and it leaves a void with, you know, that continually works its way down and, and creates that deeper...
On Wildwood, there's about five of them on that stretch of road. Is there any util, there's not that many utilities. I, I don't think that's the case there. There's just not that many reasons to go across the road. There's nothing on the one side, so.
Yeah, could, could be another reason. Could be another reason.
Okay, does anybody else have anything? I think something that we should talk about is those eight lots, you know, I don't know what, we probably shouldn't do that here and now, but...
Not tonight, but there would be the opportunity to...
See, the trouble with relieving an assessment at the time of the improvement is you can't, when you sell those lots next year or so, we can't come back and reassess for that now improved piece of property. You got a one-time shot to do it, now or never. I, I think that's right, right?
Right. So we look at developing the assessment role, as I said earlier in the presentation, probably in August or so, and that would come before the city council for approval. There would be a final assessment hearing typically at that time as well, where the focus is more on the assessment value that's being applied to each property, not so much the, what's being proposed for the improvements at this hearing.
So if this gentleman hadn't have split that property up, which I believe he did five to eight years ago or so, those lots were subdivided in the kind of recent future or past, if that would be one parcel, would that then be one assessment?
The way we're approaching it this year, yes, it would be.
It would be one assessment, like the property of Wildwood Ranch is six acres or so, and it's one assessment, so...
In the past, we looked at the zoning and looked at how many lots could be created, and some part, large parcels were assessed more than one assessment in prior projects.
Okay, well, that's just conversation for your, whatever, but there's a lot of discussion, arguments back and forth when we come up with this stuff, so we'll see how it lays. All right, that's all I have to say. We done? Let's close the assessment here for Rushmore Boulevard. Thank you all.